He said he don't know why the stream won't start. They're trying, they're working on it, but it worked last night. We all get that.
We don't livestream.
You don't?
Yes, you do. Just gets recorded.
No, it's live.
I watch it live.
Well, we use different cameras. No? No, it's all that camera, alright? It used to be only this camera. Now it's that. I'm behind our times.
It was Robert did it, but it's not, it's not working now.
You'll livestream.
It worked last night. He said Robert did it, but it's not, it's not working now.
Called me and the Board of Commissioners and apologized for the delay. We had some technical difficulties with our livestream. We were getting a little bit of a delay.
He said we're live.
We are live?
That's what he said.
Okay, well, alright, that's good. We're live. At this time, I didn't ask somebody to take your education. Alright, thank you. All of our pledge.
Thank you, guys.
So we come thanking you for all of your amazing lessons, Scotty. We thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Lord, we ask that you forgive us for all of our sins and wrongdoings. And Lord, we ask that you lead, guide, and direct us during this meeting. Help us make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Lord, we ask that you continue to strengthen us, continue to keep us safe. Lord, we ask that you bless our community. We ask that you bless the citizens. And we ask that you bless our country as a whole, God. Lord, we thank you for everything, it's in Jesus' name that we do for it. Amen.
Amen.
Joining the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight for the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the agenda. On the agenda is a public hearing. For special exception, 2020-04 applicant is Ms. Marjana McDaniel, the tenant of Georgia, requested a special exception for expansion of AR recreation facility located at 4429 Woodland Road. With that, motion to open hearing.
I want to open here.
Say your second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Public hearing is open. This is Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mike River.
Miss you with Ms. McDaniel.
Mike River.
May I speak to Ms. McDaniel?
Miss you with Ms. McDaniel.
Hello?
Miss you with Ms. McDaniel.
She's not invited, so can I take a message?
This is Jessica Jones from the Upson County Board of Commissioners office. We are in the Commissioners' meeting, and we were calling her about the public hearing.
Okay, hold on just a minute. Hello?
Hey, Ms. McDaniel. Commissioner Allen, we've opened the public hearing, so we just wanted to make sure you were on the line. So, is there anything? You have five minutes. Is there anything you'd like to tell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have five minutes.
I've got a drawing from the blueprint on how to build a store that I was going to bring by to you. I forgot it's this close, then it come out this close. And then I've got Michael Reeves is doing the soil sample. That's called the environmental thing, telling me what I need there. And I bet the time just slipped up on me knowing that I forgot all the files.
Okay. Oh, well, it doesn't sound like you're ready. Would you be ready in two weeks?
Yes, sir. Because he, Michael called me last night. He said he's seen, he said he'll have to come down because we've got to do the soil sample right after. And he said he'd come on down. And but the one that drawed up the plan, he's done gotten his plan, but got it in hand.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Chairman, we want to continue the public hearing if that's what you want to do.
Alright, okay. So is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, is there anything else that I need to get?
We will, we're basically going to continue, well, I think. Alright, so if you have nothing else, then I'm going to ask the Board of Commissioners, is there a desire or continue this public hearing until the next meeting on the, two weeks from today?
Twenty seven.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say this. This has been through the process, through the application. This went before a planning commission, and now it's before us. And all the stuff's not together. I'm not inclined to entertain something that a board will appoint didn't have an opportunity to look at. Something different, I mean. It should have all been presented at once together. So a lot of people keep coming back and coming back and that. That's my opinion.
I understand. Is there any other topics on that? Anything else you'd like to add? I mean, I understand Commissioner Ellison's point. I mean, so, you know, the planning commission made a recommendation based on information they would give. Now, because of state statute, we have to look at it, but the planning commission has denied. And we're going to have an opportunity to see things that they didn't get to see. So I guess, Mr. Courier, is there a process to send this back to the planning commission? Or just start over? Jason?
Mr. Chairman, I would simply recommend that the same thing that was presented to the planning commission be presented to the Board of Commissioners, and that the Board of Commissioners would make a determination based on what the applicant has submitted currently.
What is?
Can of worms if we push this out and allow additional regulation.
What is the process? Just for everybody's education here, what is the process for Ms. McDaniel if we deny or approve it? If we take action, I mean, if approved, she can report it. We don't even know what we'd be approving. So if we deny it, what's her recourse other than to appeal the decision of the Board?
To my knowledge, there's no limit on reintroducing, at least from an ordinance standpoint, the same item. In your rezoning, we're aware, because there's been cases before where for rezoning, there's a whole year before you can resubmit basically the same rezoning. You don't have that same provision in our variance or in our special exception processes. So the theory is you could start all over.
If we take action and say it's denied, just assuming, she then would have to make sure she's got everything in place and then reapply?
Yes. Yeah, this would be the end of the process if she's denied. She'd be starting over again.
Unless she wants to appeal. I would say so.
Or appeal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Is a special exception appealable?
Denied?
Yes, sir. Everything's appealable.
That's what I read earlier. You indicated that it was. Okay, alright, well, public hearing is still open, so is there a motion on this hearing? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I have a motion to be closed here.
Motion to close it. Second by Commissioner Watson, all those in favor? The public hearing is now closed. Okay, I guess, you know, the Board want to proceed with the staff report?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yeah, this is basically an amendment to her 2015 special exception where she was allowed to have an AR campground use on 27 acres, 23 acres. Her numbers in the tax assessments are a little different, somewhere in there. What she's spoken about is moving what's currently called the Flint River Outdoor Center operation. And this would be the store, the boathouse operations, the kayaks, canoes, and intertunes to the Upson County side. She's got property on both sides. The other side would continue to be her home and for long-term residents who live in RVs. There are quite a bit of this property is in the flood plain. You'll see in the graphics that you'll see a little bit that replacement is to put the buildings outside the flood plain, so it's quite a bit off the river and centered on the property. The new buildings that she's specifically talking about are a 2100, 60 square foot store, two bathrooms at 64 square feet, and a 336 square foot paddle house, as she called it. AR is the predominant zoning in the area, including this property. And special exceptions for recreation facilities are through the AR zoning district, so she is in compliance with the zoning. As we always discuss, there are general review standards for special exceptions required by state law and our ordinance. These are those evaluation standards. The water will be, and the septic and water will be supplied by the well. There are some pertinent complian policies that you can implement against expansion of businesses, but also environmentally sensitive areas being protected, making sure we protect and enhance the community's unique qualities. And that we have quality development in terms of design, landscaping, and lighting, and preserving the county's rural character. As with most development, this would be a wonderful development and be consistent and enhance all these goals and manage to maintain. It could be an eyesore inducative, doesn't matter what happens in the future. And then you'll see an evaluation by the staff against criteria. Again, basically, the bottom line is it depends on how it's maintained and run as it is. There may be some other requirements. One of the questions the planning commission had was if they're this far off the river, would there be any permits for EPD? And I said I was not aware of any, they're not immediately on the river. She's not proposing another boat ramp. So I'm not aware of any direct access that the state might get involved in. She continues to pay occupation tax for the campgrounds on our side. Staff recommends approval. I would suggest that if you do go for approval, there need to be extensive conditions, require additional submissions, pre-construction, engineering, environmental, project design work. As you see in the application, there's really not very much information. The planning commission, as was already referenced, at their September 14 meeting, took a different tack, and they basically said, "We don't have enough information. We're concerned about the environmental impacts, traffic impacts." So they recommended deny. Five zero. Going to the graphics in the report. This is an area of the entire facility, property. And then here is the question about the off-the-tax-assessors website also. See, you can see the property isn't a flood plain, but you'll see with her drawing that she proposes that the buildings be up in this area, flood plain, as determined by FEMA. This is as much of a design as we get. She indicates where the store will be, and then the bathrooms, and then the paddle house, and then the well and septic locations. Then I've got some photographs of current facility on the public side, and then the facilities on our side. This is the signage for the public, part of the operations. This is the view of the major facility. There are quite a few buildings over there, but this is the major facility that is the store and the kayak operation. This is a view across the river to the boat ramp, the launch, state launch, and the beginning of the campground property. This is just moving along the bank, going further down river. So basically, that whole frontage on the Upson County side is the campground. And this is what the campground looks like. You've got these tables. In the discussion of the planning commission, this bridge that goes over a stream, and Ms. McDaniel said that the takeout would be somewhere in the vicinity of this. It would come up the stream that this goes over. And there's looking, the boat ramp from the property to the public side, and the boat ramp entrance. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Looking at the letter from 15, it said that there would be a well and a septic installed on the site down there. Is there currently a well and septic system?
I believe that what she was referring to when she talked about the soil, sonic fist, was probably dealing with a septic tank out there.
Is there a well there now?
I don't know if it's been constructed or not.
No.
There's no well or septic on the site?
No.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Was there, I heard you say something about to get out. Of course, exactly what was that?
Where the creek comes in. It's right across from here.
I don't find him.
And is that the creek?
I believe it's the creek right here.
Is that a free-flowing creek year-round?
Ms. McDaniel would be the expert on that.
Is that, Ms. McDaniel, Commissioner Ellison's asking a question. Is that a free-flowing creek year-round?
Yes, yes, yes.
Red creek?
Red creek, yeah.
And is the access point to the same drive as the little canoe access?
There are only road here, and then I guess unless she's, she hasn't discussed any proposal, additional access egress?
No, there won't be any additional port.
So it's going to be off of the same, right there, the public canoe pull-out point?
Well, yes, that's where they put my drive, yes. They took my drive and put it, and made it, mined it first, and down and there, yeah. When it comes in, and then it makes a turn square, because we don't take the inside of this. It took a picture of it.
I took quite a few more photos than we've got the presentation. I probably did take a photo, but I don't think it's in this presentation.
Somewhere in this package, I see somebody's, my upstairs, or something.
Um, I believe there was a anonymous caller that said that certain things were going to happen.
You did mention in your explanation, and I just want to make sure you're very long-term residents across the river, right?
Yes.
Would those people be living over there too?
Not according to what she told us, no.
Oh, no, no.
The stages of campground as defined by Upson County.
I mean, you know, based on what I, when I was at this place, and I looked through it, I mean, this is a question of what's going to take place down there, considering the nature of the operation, where it's located, you know, obviously, what type of impact it could possibly or not possibly have on the environment. I, yeah, I mean, I think before we, before I would be willing to say, hey, let's move forward, let's approve this, if we need to, you know, have some drawings, some engineer drawings to say, you know, what was going to be where this is. I mean, you know, this is AR, you know, and, like I said, we may not agree on this, though, but the fact that there is going to be a cleaning store, quite in the study in the application, it's not a application that they have to make, the people that are there, and for the people passing by. So, you know, you got an AR with a cleaning store. That concerns me a little bit. Great, all of us dusting it together, but, you know. Still, cleaning store, it's a cleaning store during properly zoned locations and pay the appropriate taxes associated with that. Anyway, I might. For the package, we just don't have enough information.
I have a motion to Commissioner Ellison for denial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion? Here you notice, if there's discussion, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Okay, Ms. McDaniel, I'm sure Mr. Curry will be ready to further with your plan going forward possibly. Thank you. Alright, then there's a special exception for Stephanie and Kevin Fowler. They requested an after-the-fact AR special exception for temporary residents in the RV while their home is being built at 500 Baker Grit Road. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? So, if there's something all in favor, just head this way. So the public hearing is now on the phone.
Hello?
Miss you with Ms. Fowler.
Hello?
Miss you with Ms. Fowler.
Your fan?
This is Jessica Jones calling from the Commissioners' office. I am calling.
Hi, Jessica.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm great. We are now in the public hearing for your special exception. I'm turning it over to Chairman Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Allen.
Okay, good evening, this is Fueman, and I'm with the Board.
Good evening. So, Ms. Fowler, if you desire, you have five, talk to us about your request, or you don't have to say it if you don't want to, but the floor is yours for five minutes.
Okay, I don't think I have, actually. It's already been through planning and zoning, five years on it. So if you have questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
Okay, well, thank you. Alright. No other questions for this. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm open.
There's a second? Okay, all in favor? Public hearing is closed.
Yes, sir. This is a very traditional request of special exception to live in an RV during construction other than the fact that they moved the RV ahead of us. So this is, as you referenced earlier, after the fact. The address is 500 Baker Grit Road, construction. I believe that we found out with the planning commission, scale is not yet determined, but we'll address that later in the recommendation from the planning commission for the request of the flowers. There is some flood plain on this property, but it's down in 10 miles. It's nowhere close to the location of the home. Again, there are general review standards for special exceptions, and this must be evaluated with the hands. The water will be supplied by a private well. As per your ordinance, that's required to already be installed. You've got a graphic, a photograph in the package that shows the well hasn't been installed. Also, any septic tank or septic system has to be connected or installed. That has been done, you'll see that documentation. The traditional process is that for this to begin the process, they have to obtain a building permit. To obtain a building permit, you have to already have obtained your driveway and your septic system. Those are included. The difference in special exceptions, they actually have to be operational. They don't just have a permit, but they have to be operational. And that is the case here. Obviously, this is another home in the neighborhood. The RV is not going to have any substantial impacts, so they're going to be generally compliant. And again, it's like any home, if it's properly maintained and run, it should not be a nuisance of impact on the family or the community. Staff recommends approval. There are a series of conditions that are automatic, too. This is when they're approved. The reasoning, or my recommendation, is that it's a temporary use anyway, as defined in your ordinance. And traditionally, these are normally approved at various times, for different amounts of time. Generally speaking, it's understood that this is to help somebody else with a hardship. These are those automatic conditions. The first two are ones that are conditions of the approval and getting this going. The rest of them must be maintained. It also regulates the maximum amount of time. Continue to be, put them to the sanitary sewer. The disconnect has to happen once the home, etc. So most of these conditions are sort of ongoing, they don't really get triggered until the end of the process. So really, what happens at these hearings is you determine, one, whether it's acceptable not to have a special exception, and if so, what the length of time is, and if the development plan's acceptable. The planning commission also recommends September 14 meeting. The recommendation from the planning commission is the applicant's request of 12-month permission to have the RV there. There are provisions for administrative extensions in your ordinance, but the initial period has to be approved. Looking into the graphics in your report, you can see the lot itself and the flood plain down to 10-mile creek. The home is fairly, I don't know, might be centered, but approximately in here is photographs, at least for the home side. It's hard to see probably in your graphics, but this is the master plan, and the development plan is required to be submitted. Here you see the drive, the location of the house where it will be. The RV, as it currently stands, is behind that location. There's some dimensions showing the side backs. You've got the well located here, and the septic behind even where the RV is. This is obviously the entrance. Well. And the RV is what was set up. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, anybody have any questions for staff? They already got their building permit?
They're required to. Before they come before you, they have to have it.
So 12 months, when does the 12-month tickers start?
If you say yes.
You're saying it starts tonight?
This isn't after the fact. The theory is that the RV doesn't show up until after they get permission. So.
It's physically not there right now.
It's physically not there right now.
I'm not sure if it's stacked or not. Okay. Um, I, I, I call it believe it, just being repaired. It's basically in the shop.
Okay.
They vote?
They vote, and they have to be repaired occasionally.
All right. So, gentlemen, you've heard the staff report. Is there a motion on this special exception?
Mr. Chairman, like, this is temporary, these are already...
A motion to approve Commissioner Ellington. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, we do need a period of time, and we do need approval of the development plan. It'd be part of the...
You got a development plan?
That was that little drawing that...
Oh.
That's it. So, this is for the...
Well, I, I'll mean, include the development plan starting effective, uh, two days.
For 12 months.
12 months.
Thank you.
So, a motion to approve, um, which includes the approval of the site and the effective date, starting today, October 13th. Is there a... Motion seconded by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Further discussion, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Mr. Fowler, thank you for your time and welcome back, and I hope your, I hope your building process goes well for you.
Thank you so much. You guys have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Okay. Next on the agenda are public comments. Do you have none? Okay, gentlemen, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and if you would allow, I would like to pull item B off the consent. Add it to the top of new business. Item B is the approval of the lease with Promised Place. So, on the consent agenda for you is the September 22nd regular meeting minutes, acceptance of the August 2025 answers. And as discussed, approval at our workshop, the approval of contract proceedings, Matthew, for the Phase 2 paving projects, which amounts to nearly 40 miles of road resurfacing, and the cost of all those $500. Is there a motion on the consent?
Unmoved. Second. As presented with the removal...
So, there's a motion to approve the consent by Commissioner Watson, seconded by Commissioner Jones. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Okay, new business. First item on the new business, um, which I, I asked to be included in the consent. And Jason, I apologize. I should have gotten people to this and just, uh, the only reason I asked that we pulled this out, we, we, over, over time, we, we've always had discussions about lease agreements and who we have lease agreements with. And, and just before the meeting, it sounded like this might be an opportunity for us to go back and give a little bit more information from Promised Place, to determine if you agree that this, this lease is for 12 months for $100, um, a month, and, um, see, it's more, about, right at 180 square feet of office space. Is that, you know, I just got this question for you, because you've been here longer than most of us, and, uh, is that, this lease has been in place for a number of years.
And those utilities also...
Do we know if Promised Place is a full-profit business, sir?
I don't actually know.
Basically.
We'll, we'll do a lot of due diligence on that since y'all don't want us to do an inquiry on that. Mr. Chairman, um, on the, on the Promised Place itself, um, is there any other type of information you'd like to see? If, if it wasn't the leases represented to the board?
I, I personally would just like to see if that is a fair market price for that square footage, you know, with the utilities.
It's a good deal for the property.
Probably not.
It's definitely not.
So, but I understand, you know, that, um, my understanding of what that, that, that organization provides is a benefit to the community. Maybe if we had a better understanding of, of the impact of what they provide, it might, you know, it might provide them some sort of credit, for lack of a better word, um, for the lease, you know, number of customers, who, who they serve, where they're from, you know, that kind of thing, and what is the fair market price for this? You know, and, and I'm, again, I'm curious, are they a full-profit business? Anybody have any...
One more question, Mr. Chairman. Is it, um, is it okay if we just sort of treat it as a, um, a month-to-month with them until such time as we're able to represent it to the board?
So, the staff recommends, I think so the lease right now is, um, due to expire...
It expired.
Is expired, so, um...
And I, I want to say it was... Why have we been doing month-to-month? Because it expired in June.
Okay.
I want to say it was, uh, our staff that caught the fact that we just didn't get it on for renewal, so... Kudos, kudos to the clerk for, for recommending.
Yes. So, I guess the proper way to do this would be to, uh, table this to our next meeting.
Yeah, that, two weeks, I'm sure, plenty of time.
And, and it's okay for, I think, business, it's, it's your call. I would say it's a business decision, my, my, unless somebody disagrees, that we just continue with a month-to-month to, to a little bit more due diligence on this lease agreement. Everybody seems to be okay with that, that type of... So, is there a motion to table? Is there a motion on this?
I wouldn't table it.
Is there a second?
Second. And that being, uh, October 27th, May.
Yes. All right, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Thank you all. All right, next on the agenda is discussion and approval of SLOs, SLOs funds for purchase of computers. You have in the packet, the staff summary, case in order.
Sure, um, a- as the board may remember, uh, you gave us a section a few months ago to ensure that all SLOs funds result, I, I guess we, to, regardless of whether or not the purchasing, um, policy requires it to be awarded by the board, that the board had to have oversight of the release of all SLOs funds. So, with that consideration in mind, um, I'm asking the board to release an amount not to exceed $6,000 for the replacement of, um, uh, 11 units for the IT department, and these are basically just desktop computers. They are the 11 that remain that still run Windows 7 and can't be upgraded to Windows 10. And as the board, all of our computer refreshes are, are purchased from SLOs. Uh, so there's a, a rough calculation of what the estimate would be, uh, asking for an amount not to exceed 6,000. Uh, the original budget for this item in the 2016 allocation was 140, this is $10,000. The amount expended in this category to, to date, or through September 30th, is 123,001.17. If we added that $6,000 request, uh, the remaining balance would be 16,882.
Okay. Have you heard the request from staff? Is there a motion?
Is 6,000 enough? Because if 11 each, that's over 6,000.
The lab, the long library is in case of...
Oh, that's correct.
So, the other two units are two, so, it says 11.
That's what I was thinking. I thought it was 11 plus the two additional.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, um, the request from staff to purchase these computers.
For an amount not to exceed 6,000. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ellington. Any more discussion? So, the motion made and seconded to, um, approve an amount not to exceed 6,000 computers. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. All right, gentlemen, next on your agenda is a, um, approval of SLOs funds for the squirrel bluff overlook deck.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for this specific request, the staff is, um, asking for an amount not to exceed $8,000 for lumber to reconstruct the structure of the platform. Staff already had in the budget the replacement of the decking, and, and that had begun a few weeks ago. As a matter of fact, the chairman and I were out there when they started that project. Um, they began to realize very quickly the structure underneath didn't look, um, up to snuff, uh, so I made the recommendation that we have our building official look at it. Uh, he went and did a quick inspection on it, and then, uh, basically failed it structurally, so we were forced to close it, and so what we're asking the board to do is release an amount not to exceed $8,000 just so we can purchase lumber to reconstruct that, that support structure for the overlook. Some brief history on the budget, SLOs budget, the amount originally allocated for the bluff projects was 702,000, and this is an important amount to keep track of. I know we talked about this amount a lot. The amount expended September 30th, 2020 is, uh, 278,460, and if you add the $8,000 request, it has a remaining balance of, uh, 415,589. And as we have pointed out many times, and one of the things that we're working on as an organization is trying to determine what's the best use of the remaining SLOs funds for the bluff. Directly, Richard, we had about, um, master lighting looking for, uh, so this will eat into that sum. We've been using the estimate of 400,000. It doesn't diminish it significantly, and as the board knows, um, not everyone is aware. We do have to supplement that budget a little bit. It does generate a lot of revenue out there, but not, and, and not enough to completely cover itself, so this would go a long way to help, help support that.
Okay.
And when staff feels comfortable that the remaining balance of 415 is, is, is enough to...
Strong.
Yeah, it, it's a strong balance. We should be able to do everything that we discussed, um, especially if there's a grant submission to do some of the larger items, so we feel like that's possible.
Chairman, can I ask him a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, decking board, so who paid for them?
That was already in the budget, though, in the budget. Who's performing the work? Are we doing it in? Staff.
Or we, or we, you can, you know, we're just replacing wood, wood, or we can, you know, alternative methods of, of steel or, or, um, any, like, to support it.
I don't believe so. No, I think we're just looking at...
Anybody know where it was built?
Or who built it?
Been here a long time, Dave.
We've had some experience with, with those issues in the past as well, so, uh, so...
Is this the right thing to do?
It, it is. It's close, currently.
Well, I understand that, but I'd like to have a long-term, not replaceable deck. You know, that's why I think the decking boards, you know, put trucks down, ain't no worry about it.
And that's what the staff was in the process of installing, when they...
Oh, truck, dinner?
Is that the, um...
No, the truck is the fiber board.
Right. Yeah, it was, it was some sort of fiber board decking they were loading up.
Good.
It's what I saw they did, I think it was, um, on the ramps. Now, they may have done something up on the surface, deck surface itself, so, um, when will they start and how soon will it be done?
Uh, they'll start immediately upon approval, so...
I mean, it's almost that time of year, fall, and the overlook at the bluff, so if we could, if we could, uh...
Get a time frame?
I, I do not. I know they're anxious to get started.
I know, it's hard to hear.
Yeah, and that's why, um, I, I don't think they had anticipated just how much that lumber was going to cost.
The field, the field's going to oversee the project, or...
No, this'll, this, this'll be done by rec staff. This'll be, um, under Thomas's guidance.
Okay.
Over this...
Talking about the support structure.
Right.
You know, making sure that they're set right by, because it's my understanding that's where the body is, is down at the base.
Yeah, I haven't seen it myself, but...
Okay. So, you have, you have a proposal for staff? Is there a recommendation? I mean, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I might want to improve the total amount to prepare the proposal.
Have a motion to approve the amount not to exceed $8,000 for this project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Wilder. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Okay, before we get into comments, I'd like to point out that we have an executive session on the agenda for tonight, and, and gentlemen, the purpose of that executive session was for personnel. Specifically, I, I mean, it's, it's the county managers. It's that time of year for performance appraisal. I just got, if you would indulge, I would like to, um, cancel the executive session tonight, so I can collect that and enter for y'all before I get to be part of it. If you're able to knock it out before then, so, um, can I have a motion to remove the executive session?
Unmoved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's the always a favor.
Jason, I'm sorry, I'm a little like, I don't want to... Pedro act.
Let me, let me, let me know if the paycheck stops, let me know. It's mailed to the water department. I'm just kidding. All right, um, uh, comments? Mr. Pascal, do you have anything you'd like to pass on?
No, I, thanks, Jessica sent this up. I mean, I guess I'm really supposed to have it on, Jason, I don't know.
I didn't quite understand that. You're, you're real loud, so get, take the colonel voice down to a lieutenant voice.
I can't talk quite.
Hey, no, that was better.
I said, uh, I keep Jessica sent this up, and I just, the notes I have, I can, I can show it to you.
The notes he had on Jason, he can show you.
Oh.
They need them if they're, especially if they're deferential.
I'll, actually, I'll show them for you, Pat.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Jason?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have two items. Uh, one, and I think the chairman will comment about this as well. First of all, I want to say a big thank you to all of the folks involved in elections and voting. If you've been watching the news, you've seen that our voting system in all across the state of Georgia is seeing, um, a lot of stress. A lot of people are out there enthusiastic. They're voting in high numbers. Um, and we recognize that it's a giant challenge, um, for our elections board, our election superintendent, our registrar. Um, we, we've gotten a few complaints at the office about wait times. Um, I've not gotten many myself, but there have been a few. I, I, I listen to those. I take them seriously, and then I take all that feedback and, and give that to the, um, the chairman of the, of the board of elections. It's my understanding that they've made some wonderful on the fly, times down even further. Um, I talked to him about an hour and a half before we walked into the meeting today. He said things are getting smoother, so we appreciate everyone's patience, but we do understand that there's a, a large demand. People are ready to get up there and exercise their right to vote, so, uh, we're, all, we're, we're doing everything we can for the election staff to, to help them move swiftly, smoothly, and make it a good experience for everyone, so, thanks for those Thanks for those that have, um, waited thus far and, and as, as they make adjustments and get better, um, you know, we're grateful for their efforts, so.
You know, I told Mr. Haney a while ago, it's four hundred and eighty, um, odd yesterday, and the numbers are going to be similar today. So, couple of that, but I think twelve hundred absentee ballots have been received so far. And so that's considering we have roughly ten thousand extra voters actually counted, so it's going to be a high level turnout. And I appreciate, and I, while we're on the topic, I'll try to jump in if you don't mind, but I appreciate the, the staff, you know, not just the, the voting staff, but Civic Center flexing to support that and, uh, they had events that, you know, and things planned for Civic Center. My understanding is they've made adjustments over there, so it's been, it's been a good team and, uh, I, I went yesterday. It wasn't bad. I got to know some people that were laying around for two hours, so, uh, did the best we could, we're, we ask to maintain social distance, so.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add, I talked to colleagues, fellow managers across the state yesterday via our list serve, so we've been, you know, sharing our concerns, ideas, and it's, it's really just a statewide phenomenon. There's some communities out there that are really, that have some really, really rough wait times, so I'm, I'm proud to say that, you know, with the, we have and all the great volunteers, I mean, I think the fact that that day one, we kept it at two hours or less is, is good. It can always be better, and the folks that called with, uh, complaints, like I said, we take those seriously. Even if they come to us, we make sure they get to the board of elections and they're taking those seriously, so they've, they've got a key eye on delivering a good process for everybody, um, so I'm, I'm kind of the way it's moving, so.
We just need to continue to learn, I mean, every time evolution like this, we, we can learn from it, apply those lessons learned going forward, you know, four years from now, we have another general election, you know, hopefully we, we're better. But I, I talked to a gentleman today and it was forty-five minutes, still not great, but not bad.
That's pretty good.
In a lot of communities.
Forty-five minutes is pretty good.
Yes, yes, okay, Justin.
Uh, the other item, then, um, we've seen it already, um, but our schedule was in receipt of that after lunch today. All of you have a copy of it in your inbox, um, I don't want to go into details about it now, if you would, just please give me some feedback on it, I've already gotten some good feedback from. I'm gonna put together a, um, a next week of all the folks that are involved with court systems and the building. But, just, just to give you, um, you know, a brief sample, we're, we're looking at having the, the roof completely refurbished and the cupola basically through the end of February, and then there'll be a, uh, a period, a new cupola will be moved in from its construction site in Kentucky and placed back on the building. So, news is, we'll be going to that construction phase that'll be taking up some parts, parking spaces, it's a little challenging down, for downtown over the next few months, but the good news is, is that the, sooner they get in to get working, the drier and drier that building's going to get, especially when they remove the cupola. And we have, um, that period of time between the end of February and June, we won't have a cupola, but we'll have a very dry building, so hopefully our, our patrons and the folks that utilize that place on a daily basis will, will be able to appreciate that. Once we have that schedule firm, as in you've gotten enough feedback, talk to our consultants and our construction manager, we will get that out in the form of a press release. I wanted to get the board's feedback first before we did that.
Yeah, anybody that's gone through any kind of rehab, it's always painful when you're in the middle of, you gotta look ugly for a while before it's beautiful, you know? It sounds like I was surprised that the amount of time is going to be, we're going to have for a while, so, but the water will be coming in.
That's right.
So, yeah, yeah, thank you. Anything else?
Those are the only comments I had, Mr. Chairman.
Does he have anything for us? Do you have anything? Ms. Jones?
Appreciate everybody watching, that's it.
Ms. Watson?
See the progress in the courthouse, we'll be ready for it to be dry and.
I saw, I'm happy to see the, the progress being made on the court, and one other thing, Jason, I was notified Friday, I believe, that we had, I guess it was Friday.
Yes.
A little vandalism at the, uh, Lincoln Ford bathroom and the pavilion, and the sheriff was notified and I haven't got a report for a minute, I, you know, I, but we have had some terrorism at the, at the newly replaced, the new bathroom facilities at Lincoln Ford and the. It was beating mostly, but there was some other stuff that was not good.
You have any kind of camera system? I, we got any kind of cameras?
Two, no. But, you know, and, and I, and I don't recommend it, I go there.
I know.
I, I don't think it'll be cost effective.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, it almost looked like someone just went in there and dumped paint everywhere. Didn't, didn't, it definitely doesn't look like graffiti.
It didn't look like graffiti.
Yeah.
What's else?
I encourage everybody to give a exercise, and hopefully I got this, this board, the staff. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this at every meeting till we do something, we gotta take a hard look at ordinances. We got some outdated ordinances, we got some ordinances that have disappeared, we need to, we need to get that right, that's not something that's going to happen overnight, but we gotta start the process. And we may have to look outside our organization to make that happen. Got a lot of things on the plate, but nothing's more important than the future. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
I think we're all over with that, and Jason and I, we talked about that a little bit earlier this week, so.
And staff's discussed it amongst themselves as well.
Yeah. Uh, alright, two things, does Commissioner Wilder look like he's got a birthday? He, he looked pretty good for two hundred and forty-five years. It's a baby's birthday.
I ain't do it.
So Commissioner Wilder, I, I celebrate his birthday, you know, so, helps to remember that, uh, you know, while I'm in my Navy, twenty years ago, the attack on USS Cole. That was a, that was a day, and I tell, I tell everybody, before nine eleven, it was October twelfth. Significant day for the ladies. With that, echo what was already been said, looking forward to great progress on the courthouse, I know it's going to be painful, I know it's going to be, it's going to be ugly before it's beautiful, but it'll be beautiful, then it'll be better. And, uh, please, 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 go vote and be patient, and, uh, and otherwise, that's all I've got, and finally, most thanks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh.
Still alive?
He did.
Two hundred and forty-five years.
See you, Pat.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Hey, what, he was, he was loud, hey, what?
I ain't figured it out, when does he stop?